I'd like to call the order of the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this January 20th of 2025. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Ernett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noll.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Does anybody wish to address us from the public on anything that's, I guess, regarding this Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee?
Revised the motion to substitute this revised version.
I'll revise my second or motion, whichever I had.
So there's a motion to substitute this agreement for the one that's under.
Yes, sir.
That's the motion.
Okay.
The amended development agreement.
Is there a second on the motion?
I seconded it.
Okay, and you're okay with the change then?
Yes, absolutely.
It actually took away one of my questions, so I was going to ask about that.
Is there one other item on the Corporation Council disclosure?
I had this one.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are awaiting some additional information related to disclosures of beneficiaries. So we would ask that prior to final execution that we receive those, and those are approved by Corporation Council.
So right now, the committee has before at the amended copy, because there's been a motion that's been approved for substitution. Now, as to the amended copy, there would be a motion to approve subject to the village receiving the appropriate disclosure document from the developer.
Trustee Mills?
Do we then, under additional business on the main meeting, do we just defer action on that then?
No, you would approve it subject, the agreement would be approved subject to the disclosure agreements being submitted and approved by Corporation Council.
Okay, so we will get a copy of those, though?
Yes, we can submit that to you, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion in the second, the amendment, and the original motion as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and it is passed. B is approval of an ordinance granting site plan amendment for Bellworks Townhomes located at 1705 Lakewood Boulevard.
Most true proof.
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Do you want to explain this one?
Yeah, this one is really just an amendment needed to make reference to this development agreement, so it makes references to the revised timelines and financial security requirements that are outlined within the development agreement.
Anybody have any further questions up here from or Jen, or anybody else? Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and it is passed. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call the second meeting in the month of January, on January 20th, 2025. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Ernett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noll.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Trustee Ernett, you want to listen to the pledge? Everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Ernett. To leave the board, I'd like to move public comment to the end of the meeting before the adjournment. Is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
I'd also like to go down to President's Report, go a little by order, because we do have a resolution. We have some guests in the audience. That's okay with everybody? Okay, move on to item number six, President's Report. We have a resolution. Who's got the resolution to read? Anybody?
I have it. I can.
Okay, I'll read it.
Would you like me to read it, or do you want to read?
You can read it, that's fine.
I never get to read anything.
You don't get to read anything.
Don't want to feel left out.
This is Resolution 1726-2025, a resolution pledging to join Cook County, to unite against the hate campaign. Whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates seeks to continue to become more equitable, welcoming, and connected as part of the Cook County community, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates is dedicated to protecting all residents from hate crimes and seeking an end to bigotry in all of its forms, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates supports efforts towards social justice, and whereas in 2020, anti-black hate crimes continue to be the largest bias incident victim category, with 2,871 incidents, which represents a 49% increase since 2019. Whereas the city, excuse me, the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism, revealed that anti-Asian hate crime increased by 189% in the first quarter of 2021 compared to just one year before, and whereas FBI reported anti-Hispanic hate crimes rose 8.7% in 2020, and whereas there's a 9% increase in the number of civil rights complaints from Muslims in the United States since 2020, and whereas Illinois residents saw a 350% increase in antisemitic incidents between 2016 and 2020, and whereas the Human Rights Campaign reported that 2021 was the deadliest year on record for trans and gender non-conforming people, and whereas, according to the Department of Justice, persons with disabilities comprised 26% of victims of all non-fatal crimes between 2017 and 2019, and whereas the Cook County United Against Hate Campaign disrupts intolerance by providing a visual, verbal, and educational avenues to stand up against all forms of bigotry, and whereas Cook County United Against Hate is an empowering, loving, and community spirit symbol to disrupt the symbols of discrimination that are too many to count, and whereas Cook County United Against Hate is an impactful pledge to welcome all people regardless of their background or identity, and to support tolerance and justice, and whereas Cook County United Against Hate is a personal choice to become educated on the legacies of systematic bigotry and how to be actively anti-hate, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates encourages residents to actively learn from those with lived different experiences and to question hateful acts whenever seen or heard, and to educate themselves on how to safely interrupt hate, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates encourages residents to post the Cook County United Against Hate beacon on homes, cars, storefronts, office doors, and online, so all can recognize it and know that all are welcome and hate has no home here, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates encourages its residents to take the pledge to unite against prejudice and to support tolerance and justice. So now therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Hoffman Estates that this, Section 1, that this resolution adopts the Cook County United Against Hate pledge, and the Village of Hoffman Estates does hereby commit to fighting injustice and intolerance, and hereby joins with its community to welcome all people regardless of their race, religion, ethnicity, age, gender, identity, sexual orientation, disability, class, or other backgrounds.
Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. The increase in hate crimes is very disturbing. Want to applaud Commissioner Britton for bringing this forward with his fellow colleague, Kevin Morrison, who's our county commissioner, is very strong supporter of Commissioner Britton's initiative. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Ernett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noll.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Commissioner Britton, Kevin Morrison, you want to come up and speak to this? Is anybody from Beth Tikva here? Any representatives of Beth? Come on, you guys come on, we'll speak next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I am Scott Britton, Cook County Commissioner for the 14th District, just next door. You are very fortunate to have an exceptional Cook County Commissioner on your own. I tried to steal some Hoffman Estates the last time we did districting. I couldn't grab any of it, so, but it's nice to be your neighbor and to embrace this United Against Hate initiative. This started almost two years ago now, when I got up to get my Sunday paper on a Sunday morning, and I found a bag laying in my driveway filled with rice. I've now learned that rice was there to keep it from blowing away, and inside was the most horrific, awful antisemitic literature you could imagine. And I'm standing in my driveway thinking, one, it's weird having a Nazi in your driveway, and two, even as a Catholic, I was thinking, this is horrific, and what do my Jewish brothers and sisters think about this? I've now learned that that type of material was placed in driveways all over the north and northwest suburbs, and I decided that I thought we needed to do something to stand up, but to say that hate has no home in Cook County. And that's why we've started Cook County United Against Hate, and with my great partnership with Commissioner Morrison, we've continued to bring this to as many villages, groups, organizations as we possibly can. And it has been gratifying for me to see so many, particularly of our faith community, who have united, to say that we do not accept this type of unreasoned bigotry, particularly in different categories, whether it be antisemitism, Islamophobia, homophobia, or any other of the very unfortunate, ugly faces of our common humanity. I applaud the Village of Hoffman Estates for joining in this fight. We are now over 70 partners. I believe all 25 municipalities in my district have joined in. We're moving further west and south, so thank you very much, and I do embrace the work that we do, particularly with Kevin Morrison and myself and our districts, to really try and raise up the issues that are important to the northwest suburbs as we try to best to continue to represent you in Cook County. If Kevin wishes to say a few words, if that's all right?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Britton, and good to see you all again. I was with many of you this morning celebrating Martin Luther King Day. I just want to first and foremost commend the Village Board for passing this initiative. The inclusivity of Commissioner Britton's work definitely should be commended as well. You know, no types of bigotry and hate belong in Cook County, and I want to say as the sole Commissioner representing Hoffman Estates, it has been an honor, and I am so proud, especially on Martin Luther King Jr. Day, that you are taking this action. So I want to commend all of you for standing up against hate and saying that hate does not belong in Hoffman Estates. We've seen many incidents of homophobia, antisemitism, Islamophobia within my district, even recently in Mount Prospect where I live, attacks against LGBT individuals. And as a member of the LGBTQ community, it means a lot to see one of my 19 villages stand up, and you are now added to some 70 that have now joined, united against hate. And I just commend Commissioner Britton for bringing this forward. He's also helped elevate this initiative at the National Association of Counties to try to get counties across the nation to follow in step, and so, thank you. It is incredibly meaningful, especially on Martin Luther King Jr. Day, to pass this today. So thank you for all your support, and thank you for having me here today.
Well, thank you. Very fortunate that both of you represent us in Cook County.
I appreciate that, and I guess I would be remiss as we stand here on Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and the celebration that we did in my district in four different places this morning. I'm always reminded of my favorite, there's many quotes you could use from Dr. King, but my favorite, which relates to the work that you did tonight, which is that darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And thank you for embracing this initiative.
Thank you. Hold on, we got to copy the resolution for you. But first, we're going to ask the Social Justice Committee from Beth Tikva to come forward. They're the ones that called me and said, yeah, you really got to pass this, Mr. Mayor, like, quick, so.
I'll just say a few remarks. We just want to commend you, Mayor McLeod, and the Village Board for passing this ordinance, and we think it's particularly meaningful that you chose to adopt it today, Martin Luther King Day. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks again for bringing it forward.
I will be very brief. My name is Ron Koppel. I am a member of the Social Justice Committee. I'm also children survivors of the Holocaust. My dad was in Auschwitz, and I could go, I'm a docent at the Illinois Holocaust Museum as well as a second-generation speaker. I'll be, can't possibly go into my father's story, but I lecture, or lecture is the wrong word, I speak in front of a lot of the students, and I always leave them with this, and I'll leave this with you now. When one hatred is allowed to fester, others climb in behind it. Thank you.
And also from Beth Tikva, I would like to thank all of you for your support that you and the village and the police department have given us. I can say the best thing, we feel safe being in this village, so thank you again.
I'll say a few words, or your wife steal your thunder.
Well, she's there, I don't speak.
Okay. Wise man.
Good man. Good man.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, let's get a picture. Everybody come on, like, Commissioners, come on up.
We didn't vote on this.
Yeah.
We did vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who do you vote for?
It's a roll call.
That's all right, it's good to vote again.
We did a roll call, yeah, we did vote on it.
We did a roll.
We voted twice.
Yeah, we did do a roll call, but I didn't know it was for this.
Sure I can.
Up here.
No, no.
Yeah.
It's your next holiday picture, right here.
Sure.
Was there a take on that?
Well, you have more. Yeah. Kevin loves you. That's amazing.
No.
Can you come in just a little bit? Yep. Closer. Thank you. There we go. Now, here, please. One, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. And one more. There we go.
Kevin, good to see you. Good. You missed it. Thank you.
All right, well. Nice work, man.
I was a 12-year trustee, you want to be right now?
Nice work, yeah.
It looks like it was bent on the driveway, it was a tree, thank you.
Oh, no.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you for coming here.
The rest of the president's report is due order. Item number four is the approval of the minutes of the 113, 2025 meeting. Chair accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes, seven motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Chair accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. The items on the consent agenda are the following. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the schedule of bills for January 20th, 2025, the amount of $475,678.74. What pays when you have a meeting every week? Bills aren't aside for a week. C, approval of an ordinance amending section 8-8-7 hotels of chapter eight licenses of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code. D, approval of an ordinance supporting a Cook County Class 7C renewal application for the property located at 2590 West Gulf Road, which is Ricky Rockets. E, approval of an ordinance supporting a Cook County Class 7C renewal application for the property located at 1051 West Higgins Road, Ziegler Mercedes Sprinter Dealership. F, approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with Trans Systems Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. G, approval of a resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the 2025 street revaluation project, contract one, the amount of $3,317,500. Does anybody want anything polled?
I would like F polled.
Okay, F polled. Anyone else have anything else? Okay, so this vote will be on A, B, C, D, E, and G. We do have a motion, and we have a second. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do I have any questions on this item? Seeing none, can you call?
No.
Sorry. Trustee Mills.
Did you go over any reason for the unenclosed garage space that he's looking for?
There was no reason given, but it would not have been the capacity that we would have granted, and we had a couple adverse letters received from neighbors.
You did?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. The original ask, is the smaller amount of what you approved, is that workable?
Yes.
For the petitioner?
Yes.
It is? He was okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
But why the, why the size? Was it, why the initial ask of the big size? What was the reasoning?
There was no evidence given as to why the additional.
Just because?
Just because.
Okay, that's good.
But we were also a little concerned that if you granted the extra addition with just a roof over it, there would be nothing preventing him from closing it in the future.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to five F. Approval of Phase II Engineering Services Agreement with the Trans System Corporation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Gannon Drive Resurfacing and Bicycle Facility Project in an amount not to exceed $110,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? There's no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.[1237.83]